Deeply involved in many different aspects at Logan's for High School. So 30 clubs on campus, 22 athletic teams that obviously help promote them not just academically, but socially. And then about 93% of our students have the great opportunity to be able to walk across campus and join our wonderful programming at CCC. We've got three main improvement goals. These have been pillars to Logan's for High School over the years, and they're going to continue to be 90% graduation rate, 95% attendance rate, and ensuring that 100% of our students are college and career ready once they leave the walls of LHS. And you can see here, just over the three years, some cohort data, 2023 and 2024, we had 91% graduation rate, and we were right there at the end of last year, but unfortunately we had just a few students that weren't able to pass the finish line with summer programming to get that before commencement, but we were still at our 90% goal, and our goal is obviously within that moving forward. This is a powerful picture. You guys know the impact of this. This was last year. Before our commencement at LHS, we traveled over to Ivy Tech, and you could see in that 2025 cohort, those students, 82 of which that had earned their ICC, which is that core transfer credits that they're able to take with them upon graduation from LHS, 24 students who have earned their associate's degree, just over 4,500 dual credits earned, and then the big financial savings, that big number there, $1.8 million in tuition savings for our students. That's done because of the hard work and the dedication, the programming that we have in place, not just at LHS, but at CCC, and you can see there 130 dual credits that are offered between those two campuses. So this kind of just shows you some historical trends over the years. I'll start from class of 2019 and then work our way left. Those first four years there, 2019 to 2022, we did not have associates programming that was attainable or in place, but you can see there, starting in 2023 was our first two students that were able to attain their associate's degrees, and you can see how it's grown over the years. So in 24, 10 students, in 25, 24 students. And then, you know, we've kind of seen, not, I wouldn't say a plateau, but you kind of get to a point where you're starting to see now the number of students that we have and trying to be steady with inconsistent with those numbers and the growth. And so we've got 19 students that are projected with a potential of five or 10 more students that could potentially get some dual enrollment opportunities over the course of the year. And then our ICC numbers, as they've continued to grow since 2019, all the way now to 82 this past year, and with a projection of 84 with the class of 2026. We're very proud of that. And so a new thing, as you know, with the current class of 2029, our freshmen, is the new diploma changes. And, and you'll see some parallel, and you'll see also some changes within that. And so that left side there is the traditional Indiana college core that our students can attain, our current sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And then the comparison guide to the right then with our class of 29, the kind of that what we would consider base diploma. So the big thing on there, as you can see, eight credits in English as an example. If you look over to the right with the new diploma changes for our current freshmen, the only requirement now is two credits in English nine with one communication focus class, and then five additional English credits to be determined based on the course programming that we have at Logan's for High School. But it's not your traditional English nine, English 10, English 11, or English 12, which allows us for some flexibility in the programs and the offerings that we have for our students. Again, a math comparison, they've increased to one credit that's required between the two diploma changes, two credits of algebra, that's all the same. A new addition to this is one credit of personal finance with, starting with our freshman class, and then four additional math credits, again, as determined by the school, to be able to fit the coursework that they have to offer. Science and technology, engineering STEM focused, so you can see the comparison there. We still have, as Mrs. Hagerty is going to talk about some things here shortly, we still bio is certainly an important piece and component in coursework within the course catalog that we have at Logan's for High School. But then you have some changes there to where computer science is now an addition, that one credit there, and then two additional science credits and two STEM focus credits in addition to what's needed for the graduation pathway. Social studies, it goes from six credits to five credits, the still two credits of US history, one credit of government, that's all the same, but the big change here is, as you can see on the left-hand side, econ as a one semester, one credit course, and also the world history, civilization, geography has changed now to a two credits of world perspective, which we can talk about here shortly on what that looks like within the course offering. So then we jump into out of the content areas, some of our other areas in which we look at PE. Again, this has changed from the previous model of two required credits of PE and one health and wellness to now just one credit of PE and one of health and wellness. And the great thing about some of this stuff is like P as an example, our PCC programming, many of these opportunities were provided at the junior high school, so students can get those credits taken care of and start their transcript early, along with some other courses, algebra and such that they, based on their development and abilities, to be able to take. It just frees up some opportunities for us at Logan's for High School and their pathways that you'll see here shortly. The directed electives, there's been changes there that have kind of moved into the personalized electives, so now it's 12 total credits that can be within our CTE programming, fine arts, and world language. And then college and career readiness is that PCC's class that we have. So comparatively, you're looking at 40 credits as a base to a new 42 credits now with our class of 2029 diploma. I know you can't read this, but I'll kind of just touch base on it just to give you a little example. That's the base diploma as mentioned, and then you can add seals to this. And so the new seals now are the honor seals and the honors plus seal. They really focus on, as we look at three areas of being enrolled, enlisted, or employed, there across the top, there's where you'll see those seal options. And then there's different criteria, as you can see there, that would be a variety of different tasks or criteria that needs to be met in order to attain that. We can, you can look at kind of that enrollment honor seal as kind of the current academic honors diploma, very similar as to what we currently offer with our sophomores through seniors. And then, again, a variety of different work-based learning opportunities and such that are really tailored, they say tailored to the programming and offering to be able to meet the needs of the students, to put them in a pathway based upon whether they're ready for post-secondary, they're wanting to go to college or university, or they're looking to enroll, or they're looking to be employed right away out of high school. And so what we're looking also to do with this is really, there's a lot of information to take in, families, students, and try to put together a path or roadmap for them to be able to see, what does this look like over four years? And so this is just a sample of that. This is that basic diploma that you can see beginning with the class of 2029. And so that's the courses that they would be able to take over their four years in their content areas to help them successfully complete that. And then certainly, we're going to have one for each of the honor seals, looking at your three Es, looking at your honors plus with the three Es there, our ICC programming that we have, early college programming, and our PTEC or PCAP. So that'd be a great resource for our guidance counselors to work through, and also our families and students to see over their time. And then, you know, academics is extremely important, right? Students up for success, but relationships and ensuring that our students are safe once they enter the walls of Logan's for High School is certainly a number one priority for us, because all those other opportunities and learning in the classroom and our environments that we create have to be done in a safe environment. And so you can see here, obviously, the trust that strengthens the relationship between our staff and our students and our families, those connections, engagement within the classroom certainly lead to academic performance and long-term success. And I'm going to have Mr. Doobes kind of go over some of those key things that we have happening at Logan's for High School that promotes student safety and staff safety.
Thank you. First thing we'll take a look at is the staff education and training. Each year, our staff will do vector training, which is Safe Schools Videos Training. We have brought in the DEA Michael Clark out of Carmel to talk about current drug trends that we see not only locally but around the state. We've offered active shooter training that Logan's for Police Department's put on for our staff to kind of witness and walk through. And then our SROs do local trainings as well for our staff. The ARS, the anonymous reporting system, students have, students and faculty of staff are, have an opportunity to report anything that they would find in the school that is not school-related, off-base, puts them in an awkward situation, anything like that. We've had about five reports so far that we've investigated and followed up on. Our school safety specialists, currently, we have five school safety specialists in the high school. We renew our training every year either in the fall or the spring in a two-day conference, or can do regional conferences as well to renew that. This year, we'll put a six staff member through basic school safety, which will occur in the fall and the spring. September 10, our ALICE training, which stands for Alert Lockdown Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. Our high school staff, along with the corporation, will go through a training led by our SROs. And then in the afternoon, our high school staff will break out and go through scenarios in the ALICE training. The reunification drill, this year, Logan's for High School and the Century Career Center will do our reunification drill. We reunify off-campus at Ivy Tech, so we have already initially met with Ivy Tech to discuss how that's going to look. We're looking, the dates of March 16 through 20, which is the Ivy Tech spring break. They thought that would be the best time to, we're going to try to evacuate 200 kids, volunteers, and get that done. Then the Cass County Safety Commission, our first meeting this year will be October 2nd. That's where we bring in all the other school corporations, along with fire chief, police chief, judge, prosecutor. There's about 30 people that attend that. At our first meeting, we'll discuss the ALICE scenarios that we run at the high school, and then our big initiative this year is to try to get all of the high schools in the county digitally mapped. So just a little bit about what we're doing school safety-wise at the high school.
And then to continue on, I'm going to share the IDOE's projection. It's a proposal of the new accountability system for high schools in public high schools, also known as Things That Make You Go Hmm. They have initiated five characteristics that they're looking for in high school students. So academic mastery, career and post-secondary readiness, credentialing, communication and collaboration, work ethic, and then civic, financial, and digital literacy. And then to the right have said what those may look like. So pieces of data that they may look to, to then garner some high school scores off of that. With that being said, they are going to initiate a new grading model second semester. It's to be approved by December of 2025. Grades then initiated second semester of this year, which means it's off of historical data that's already happened. So there's nothing we can really change about the grade that's going to be put on us for this first year, but it will be on the 90, 80, 70, 60, 59 model. With that being said, high schools now are going to be given grades at two grade levels. So at the 10th grade, it is going to begin by students being on track with academic mastery demonstrated by earning at least 10 credits. At Logan's for High School, we have a potential for 14 credits, seven each semester, so 10 is very reasonable, it's something they should be achieving. Then there's additional knowledge, skills, and experiences that the state is looking for in order to honor those students with additional points to get to 100% value, or at least a 90% A. Those are based on attendance, two credits in college and career coursework, passing the Biology ECA, that is next to nil across the entire state of Indiana on passing that assessment, college-ready PSAT benchmarks, and also meeting an English language proficiency goal based off of WEATA assessments. So what they're looking at at the 10th grade level, and I'll show you a spreadsheet here in a second on how this gets figured, but the base on where a student begins is based on how many credits, whether they've met their 10, are below their 10, or approaching their 10 credits, and then they get additional points for those extra criteria below. And then 12th grade will also get another score for our seniors based on SAT proficiency. They have not looked at this point to clearly separate ELA in math to determine what that looks like, but ELA in math, SAT proficiency is the beginning point on whether or not students are in the red, yellow, or green. And then their additional knowledge and skills mimic those at the 10th grade level on some of the pieces, but we add a few additional. Primary goal is one of those diploma seals. So not just the base diploma to graduate, but they need an academic honors, or they need so many work-based learning hours in order to get the employment seal, or additional scores on ASVAB as an example for the enlistment seals. They've also added on here 150 hours of work-based learning. So if you think that we're just over 30 weeks of school, that's about five hours a week that students would need in a single year, or you have to map that out over a couple of years in order to make that happen for students. We do have some of our students that would meet that because they already participate in co-op, et cetera. We have a lot of students that might benefit from that, especially in the scoring model, but have no room in their schedule to fit that in. Here's an example of the 10th grade accountability spreadsheet. I'm going to walk over here just so I can point this out a little bit. So the beginning for 10th grade, remember, is based off of 10 credits at the end of freshman year, 10 credits at the end of freshman year. So they, they begin here. If they fall between zero and seven credits, they follow the red top row. If they earn eight or nine credits their freshman year, they follow the yellow row and the green row if they meet that 10 or above. So they begin here. Notice if we have a student with only seven credits, they begin with a 0% out of 100% grade. 20%, even if they have nine credits, they're only getting us a 20, and you're still failing with a 50% if you do meet the 10 to 14. So it means you have to get those additional skills, attendance, et cetera. So those are listed down here. So I have students beginning here. If we get them to make sure they're at school 94% of the time, they get to move one success indicator over. So now I have a 20, a 60%, or a 70% for those students. If I can get them to earn a second success indicator, now I get them moved over here. Again, it's still following their row, so my student that was off-track is still a 50% with those two indicators, 80% or 90%. If we get students then that meet three success indicators from these down here, they get to move over to the edge. Now, for the seniors, this gets real interesting. This begins with the SAT. We have 50% of Logan's for High School students that we're gearing up because it's student-driven decision-making that they want to go into career, so they want to employ or enlist. The SAT does not matter for those kids, but we have to start here. So again, zero success indicators. If they do not meet the SAT benchmark proficiency set by the state, they count as zero. So any students that are on our career paths that it's really not purposeful for them are starting with a zero and trying to move on. 20 or 50 meeting proficiency. Then again, as they start to meet these, if they meet one additional indicator, they're here, two additional indicators, three additional indicators. Notice if I have a student who is well-prepared for the workforce, meets three indicators, and I'm thinking, if I'm, if I'm one of those employers, if they got the employment seal, and they were here for attendance rate, and they had 150 hours in the workforce, that's somebody I want to employ that's going to be very successful, but they're B minus on this. Think of the number of kids we would have to have at or above proficiency on the SAT to make up for the kids who truly want to be good in the workforce and are good in the workforce, just to be an A, to get to 90%, because they're going to average all the kids together. That's how we're getting our letter grades. So highest priority obviously has always been for Logan's for High School for years, even when I was here before, is enroll, enlist, employ, and we are sticking by that. So the one thing we have brought in this year is a program called Zello. It's replacing Naviance, which we've used for years and years. It's a college and career readiness software. We kicked it off a couple of weeks ago, and we began by just two simple questions in a survey to a student. All students received question number one, do you want to enroll, enlist, or employ? And it said some, some things that you might do with those things. Kids all chose one. Then it said, what do you want to be when you grow? Just give us, that was the most fascinating thing. I was like, this is so fun, just to read. Who wants to be an optometrist? Who wants to be a photographer, maybe a teacher? Who wants, you know, just really cool to, to read all of these things. So I have been spearheading this along with Abby to make sure we are three steps, notice Abby got brought into this again, to make sure we, we're like maybe a step and a half ahead of what we're doing with kids to make sure we know what we're doing before we initiate it. But I've been preparing a weekly lesson plan for all of LHS and CCC teachers that have impact. And then we are using our Tuesdays of PD in the mornings where I model the lesson. So CCC or LHS teachers get a lesson from me, I model it, and then they take that exact lesson and go back and do it with their impact students on the Friday of the same week. So tomorrow is a brand-new lesson, so we're going to learn a lesson tomorrow, it's called Matchmaker, and it basically is on a five, five-point scale. I very much do not like, I sort of kind of do not like, I'm not sure, I sort of kind of like, I really, really like. And it asks them 39 questions, and then it will start to match careers that, that are closely credentialed along with what their answers were. It's really, really cool. So I did mine, and the staff all laughed because my number one was secondary school administrator. My second one was a superintendent, move over, Mrs. Starkey, never mind, it's never happening. And number three, I think, had something else to do in education, I forget what it was, and the whole staff was like busting up laughing. They're like, oh my gosh, I'm like, it works, clearly, right? So this has been really, really cool. I can't wait to like get it rolling even more because I think the kids are going to find it fascinating and ultimately learn about careers they don't even know exist because we live a fairly sheltered life, right? Then we have the Hagerty Summit of Data. I've taken all student names off of this, you can't see what any of this belongs to, but this is every kid, all their dreams and all their realities. This is being shared with specific teachers that, that work with specific kids, so we can start to say, hey, I'll use my own kid as an example, Brooklyn Hagerty, you're saying you want to be a real estate agent, you want to go into pitching, to be a pitching coach, and maybe own your own business in one of those two areas one day. Perfect. You want to go enroll. Does your historical data show that you're ready for that? And if your historical data doesn't show you're ready for that with PSAT, SAT, previous scores, et cetera, what are we going to do to turn that around? My own kid, and I'll share, I don't know if she's one of those up there or not, but she has one where she's approaching and one where she's not approaching. She is definitely going to college. What in the world? And so I asked her about it, like, I showed her her line item, and she was like, well, I didn't really know the PSAT meant that much. She causes me to twitch sometimes. So part of that is our problem. Part of that is our problem. I know we have high-achieving kids that don't know the meaning of the things we're doing to them. So part of that is bringing meaning, that's forthcoming, but the other part is some of it doesn't make sense for what kids want to do, but we're still trucking them along in, in areas of, of their interest. So here's one really, really cool thing. We have partnered with, our key club has partnered with Kewanas, and Kewanas is helping to fund a brand-new lunch and learn program that we kicked off last week. So we have put out two different surveys. Our key club members had a survey that they could fill out an application to become a tutor by volunteering their lunchtimes to go tutor another student in need. And then we have teachers who are putting out a survey to, to those of us that are helping run it to say, I have this student who could need help in algebra. So what we've done is taken all of our key club members that want to be a tutor and said, who matches up on first period with algebra? With a kid who eats first period lunch and needs algebra help, and they've become partners. So we have around 20, just over 20 partnering pairs, first lunch, second lunch, and third lunch. Our partnership with Kewanas is allowing us to incentivize them. So there's three criterias of success up at the top. The partners have to meet a minimum of twice a week. They're meeting in one of our lecture halls, and it's facilitated by a minimum of two teachers each, each lunch shift. They have to, the student getting tutored has to maintain or improve the grade in that specific course. We said maintain because not everybody's entering grades at certain times, and so we don't want the students say, I turned them in, and so maintain or improve. And then if they have any missing assignments, the number of missing assignments has to improve in that given week. If they meet those three criteria, the tutor submits their survey for the week, and those surveys go into a drawing with five partnering pairs, getting today, $5 gift cards to McDonald's each. So the really cool story came, Julie Gomer, who's in this picture, she's our key club sponsor, she came to me this morning, she's like, you're going to love this. Such-and-such student said, sent her an email and said, I don't think I should be going to tutoring because he's one getting tutored. And she's like, oh, I think you need to give it another week. Well, his name got drawn. And so today, he got announced as, as a name that got drawn, and he came to her right after the announcements after first period, and he said, I think I'll give it another week. So I was like, see, get them with food, just like everybody else. And then here's the last slide for today, and this is what we're focusing on moving forward. So our, one of our core values, the number one value up there, student-driven decision-making, despite what the state is going to grade us on, we are not going to waver off of doing what's in the best interest of our students. So if that means I'm taking an 80 for a kid or a 70 for a kid because they are an employee track and they're a phenomenal worker, so be it. That's what we're going to do. Now, what we are doing is we are sharing this with staff, they already got to see the accountability a week ago. We're sharing this with staff, and we are going to share it with students. And students, you've answered for us if I'm going to enroll, enlist, or employ. Now tell me on here which three criteria of success you're going to meet. And we're going to have them put that in their Zello, and we're going to track that throughout the years to see how we're doing on meeting the goals that are student-driven, not accountability-driven, and we're going to take the scores that go along with that. Any questions? It's a lot.
How to formulate one.
Not a formulate one. You're questioning your life's decisions on my rehire, aren't you?
You have to have the whole chart thing moving here, moving there.
Yeah, it's a lot, but we do it. And ultimately, for me, I, I shared with Michael and JD all along, like regardless of what the state does to us, because they are doing it to us, like we are not pigeon towing a, a kid down a PSAT, SAT, I'm not, I won't do it. I will tell them it matters, so do your best, but if I can get a kid to go from below to approaching and I get points because of it, great. If they're below and they stay below, I am not going to chastise a kid that doesn't want to enroll in college because they're not a high enough score.
So they're going to use the, the SAT as the entry point for the seniors, right?
Yeah.
Which I thought was ironic that they're using that at all, since a lot of the colleges aren't even using SAT anymore.
Yeah.
Do we have any more I step then, or any of that?
So Biology is for us at the high school.
ECA.
It's still Biology ECA.
But none of the other?
We don't have anything at freshman year, nothing at sophomore year. SAT is junior year, so the seniors are being graded off of their junior SAT, which is why I said this year, like the scores are going to come out second semester for this year seniors. It's based on their last year SAT score. So it's, it's all lagging data for this year, but yes, it, the ECA, which is all we have for Biology, has never in the history of high schools counted. It is counting this year as a success factor if those freshman or sophomore year students can pass it.
And there's no incentive for a student to do well in the SAT, but they don't need it, and like, they don't even need it for a lot of the colleges anymore.
Yeah.
Mind you, we put, every kid is required to take the SAT. Biology ECA has been a participation. No child left behind. Notion came out, No Child Left Behind, participation. And the biology of today is not the biology of the past. The biology they take now.
It's very molecular. So we used to dissect.
Not even, very meaningful to kids today.
Interesting. Just trying to comprehend the pressures here. I mean, I know you, you're not putting this on students. It's mandated, I get that. The slide with the 19 associate degrees and there's like 84 college core. It's just a lot of pressure. I mean, it seems like we're just like wanting to be older than they are or something. Are we seeing? Are we seeing the anxiety levels, the issues, the more counselors needed? I mean, I'm not saying you're putting on them because you're not. But man, I'm, I'm pressured just reading tense. I couldn't imagine everything else they go through and the parents trying to pressure them to get the associate's degree or we want them to have a core college 40 because it saves money. I, that's all good stuff, but achievements like that come with pressures. I just didn't know if we're physically seeing things.
I know I'm a short timer right now, so I haven't heard about, like the, any mental health I'm hearing about are not the students that are striving for this. It's environmental factors outside.
Anybody that's been here?
Yeah, like it's, it's the same very small percentage of students that have, have issues needing the counselor more and it's not the ones striving for this kind of stuff. Historically though, to pinpoint on that, we did see that when we were at Valsall School. When we had valedictorian and salutatorian, those top four-ish kids, it was, it was rough. So, but I, I haven't seen it in all honesty where I present this to, I already presented to the staff, but it was under the same notion of like, we are not going to strive to be an A high school and make kids do things they don't want to do. Like it's not our core value of who we are. I'm not doing it. But I also don't like to lose and I don't like kids to lose. So what is the game and what can I do within the game to still be purposeful for a kid who wants to go to employment? I want you to be able to show your employer that you come to school every day and that I have some experience and maybe I have a credential in a certain pathway. Like that's all okay. If that only earns you an 80%, so be it. I feel like it's a hundred percent in our book. But some of these others, like I don't think those, those success indicators at the bottom are bad things. Like it's things we should be striving for anyways. Do they need three? I don't know. We could probably argue that. To me, it's the starting point for 12th grade. You're going to start them at the SAT. Come on, right? You're not starting them at 30 credits like you did the freshmen at 10. Like, so that's the part that it's like, come on, people. You put a boatload of money in CTE and you don't put the score to go along with that.
Well, that's everything that added for me is how kids are getting all these hours at grossly discounted rates when you would think these universities would be squawking it. Kids are only going to be there two years potentially and they're not getting the four year tuition. Like where's the, where's the gap coming from? I'm confused over that.
We've, we've had some encounters with our teachers getting their credentialing under a teacher at a university that there was a little like, just not niceness.
There is a month.
Yeah. It was, it was felt by a few, but.
But it does also help their graduate, their four year graduation rate, which colleges are.
Colleges need to rate it on, if you will. Keep their funding.
Yeah.
I'm not asking you to solve that question.
Next week.
Just talking out loud. Stand that up for me.
Anything else? It's a lot for the high school, but. Come on, Milt. Throw something at me.
JD's not standing up there. My question's for JD.
We already talked about that.
I'm ready, Milt. What you got? Page 94 of the handbook will be delivered this year.
Well, thank you. We, you know, certainly wouldn't be able to do what we're able to do and provide what we can for our students if it wasn't for your guys' support. And certainly there's things, Mr. Cuffey, to your point, that always come with things to consider. And so making sure that we're making the best decisions for our staff and our students are our number one priority. We're very proud to be able to do that at Williamsburg High School.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to our public hearing for the collective bargaining process for the year 2025.
Yes, so we are required by law to have a hearing to say that we are getting ready to go into collective bargaining season, which it can not start until you can officially start bargaining until September 15th is when it can actually open. And so today is our hearing. Basically, what we will be looking at bargaining are novel things, wages, benefits, and language. And so we are extremely fortunate to have a great working relationship and we've been talking all summer long, really back to last February about kind of where we're going and what we need to do and, and how we're going to get there. And, you know, they're fully aware of the financial implications and where our budget is and what the legislators have done to us. I will just say that. And so I think tonight on the LEAs, we have Cory Kreip is here. I don't know Cory, if there's anything you want to say. People will have at the end of the board meeting, an opportunity to give input about collective bargaining, ask questions if you'd like.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, moving on now to action items. We have the consideration recommendations to approve the following policy changes. What I thought I'd do, since we're now being livestreamed, me just writing off a bunch of numbers doesn't make much sense to anybody. So I will actually put some short descriptions of these. Anyone is welcome if they'd like to, if they see this and say, what, what, what policy is changing in mandatory curriculum? We have that all available here at the administration building, so feel free to come in. So there are going to be, there's, we have some suggested changes. Policy 2221, mandatory curriculum. 2410, audio, video, and digital recording of meetings. Policy 2414, reproductive health and family planning and human sexuality instruction. Policy 2416, student privacy and parental access to information. Policy 2461, recording of IEP team meetings and case conferences. Policy 2623 would be student assessment. Policy 3220.02, supplemental payment for teachers. Policy 5111, determination of legal settlements and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlements and the corporation proof of residency. Policy 5200, attendance. Policy 5223, release time for religious instruction. Policy 5517, anti harassment. Policy 5517.01, bullying. Policy 5600, student discipline. Policy 5605, suspension expulsion of students with disabilities. Policy 5610, suspension expulsion of students. Policy 5611, due process rights. And policy 5771, search and seizure. So that is a list of those. We are now asked to vote to, consider to accept the changes to those policies. Do I have a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions, or comments? No? All those in favor signify by sign of aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I would just say all those policies are obviously recommendations from the policy company. We work with Niola that brings us in line with legislative changes. So it's nothing we've gone out and been making rogue rules on our own, if you will. Just brings us in line with current law.
Yeah, at an ongoing basis, if there's people watching this, it is a case where their business is to tell you how to fine tune your policy because of all over the country, people do things in schools and they didn't, had some unintentional consequences when they would do something in some way. So they make recommendations to us as to how to clean up our stuff so we don't have to face any crazy. Okay, next is the first readings and these are considerations of policy changes. And we have just two. 5500, student conduct and policy 8420, emergency preparedness plans and drills. And those, this is just the first reading, so we will not vote on this this evening. But again, it's available here in the administration building if you want to come in and to find out what that's all about. Moving on now to department comments, business report with Mr. Correct.
Yeah, two items for your benefit tonight. Next meeting, we'll actually have the budget hearing. We'll receive packets of information as well. Standard process for us, hearing number 22nd with adoption scheduled for the 6th of October. Second item for tonight, update on the project at junior high. Contractors continue to work even though we have students on campus. So they're working when they can to, to get things wrapped up. We expect substantial completion during fall break. That's a good time for a few of those items to be addressed that are left outstanding. I would say in one area, we have to wait until fall break is the flooring and the ag area. There's an epoxy coating that has to go down. It takes about a week to get all that prepped and down and cured. So we decided to schedule that for fall break. The space can still be used and, but that's what we had to do to kind of finalize that area. Again, all, all, all student areas are available for use and Mr. Storm continues to, to work with us and work with contractors to accommodate things. But it can be slow going when you've got students in the building. Obviously, there's a lot of things we just can't do. But we use weekends and nights for things that, that have to wait. We're slowly working through that punchless process. Like I said, substantial completion should be during fall break.
That it?
Outside of questions, comments, that's my report for tonight.
Questions, comments?
Thank you very much. When does the budget need to be published in the paper? What's the?
We don't publish the paper anymore. We publish via the gateway transparency portal. And then also we try, we put it on our, on our website. And we'll have that in the, in those two forms by Friday. 10 days ahead of the hearing.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Moving on to the knowledge report, Mr. Fall.
Yes, good evening. So at this building, we are continuing security upgrades. We added four cameras. We've got one out here in the lobby and one out front and two in the back. And then this week we are completing the intercom upgrade at the junior high at the front door in Atlantis. So previously they did not have video and the audio on it was degraded. They're about 20 years old. So ready to be up, they're the last two buildings to get upgraded. So all the buildings now have upgraded intercom access at the doors. That's all.
Questions, comments? All right, thank you. Next is the superintendent's comments, Mrs. Starkey.
I got moved up.
I just, I just follow the list. I don't.
Go ahead, Mrs. Starkey.
Well, I was just going to say.
We tried to decide what's most important and so we, we brought them in.
No, I know my role. I was just going to say, great job tonight, guys. I think it, I think it epitomizes what we're up against, if you will. And the thing in Logan's word is, like Lindsay said, we will never put a, put a kid, we're never going to put the, the square peg in the round hole just to fit the accountability model. We're going to do what's right by our students. And so we will continue to do that as long as it's on my watch and their watch. Having said that, last Friday was midterm already. We are halfway through the grading period. This starts week five, which is unreal, if you ask me. JD alluded to this. Wednesday, we have our first full professional development day and it is dedicated to analyst training in the morning. Will be the entire school corporation, including this building, will be closed for two hours for the training that morning. And just to, just to say a little bit about what we're doing, it is, basically this training is not, it's, it's going to be a change for some, for our folks on what we do should we happen to have an armed intruder in the building, but the rest of our protocol stays the same. And so as teachers have talked to me, they're like, oh, I'm excited about going to McHale and seeing everybody. And I'm like, yeah, but let me just share with you, this is going to be a little bit heavier training. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that we have to have these conversations and talk about it, but so, but I feel like we have a really good plan. And all teachers that day will be, or all staffers will be served lunch back at their building. So Mrs. Hess wrote actually an ISTA grant back in the spring and we just found out last Wednesday that we got the grant. So she'd already put like food service on notice, hey, I might be getting this or I might not. So anyway, we will be ready to roll Thursday, or Wednesday, which is, which is a great thing. Talking about safety, you may all have seen that, or saw that, you know, the state of Indiana gave more money this year to the safety grants across the state. But because they also changed the number of schools that get those safety dollars, so i.e. charters and private schools. We used to get $100,000 because of our size and then we have to match that by 100,000. Last year we got 82,000. This year we got 92,500. So while yeah, it's an improvement, it's still not back to where we used to be and 100% of those funds go to pay for SRO coverage. It doesn't fund all of our SROs, but that's where all of our money goes. So anyway, just yet another shell game the, our legislators play for, pay, or play with, with us. And then I will leave on a positive note. Homecoming week, what a beautiful week. Weather wise, I think we've gotten, so it's going to be a great week. Fun times, a lot of fun for kids. And hopefully a Barry win on Friday. Should be.
Should be going. All right, thank you very much. Questions, comments, Mrs. Starkey? Now to the highlight of the department's.
Headliner. It always is.
Really moved to the top of the heap, you know? This, I didn't know it was a competition, but apparently they are now at homecoming week. They have stepped ahead.
Just for homecoming.
Exactly. It's a, it's a little internal competition. The curriculum report, Mrs. Rosie.
So the Barry preschool, they have started or completed their first round of AIM testing, which they do in their program they use called Frog Street. And basically they're assessing development and progress to inform their instruction. So they've been very busy. In K to six, so if you remember in 2019, we adopted the science of reading, which was well before the state started to mandate that for us. And we taught phonics using Orton Gillingham, assessed, assessed with M class. And we always kind of had, I guess, I don't know, sort of a missing piece for English language learners. So last spring, we were invited by Dr. Linda Cavassos to be a part of an initiative in the state of Indiana and it's free. We don't have to pay for it, which is great. An initiative for her to come and work with our staff members on essentially making sure our teachers are able to teach our EL students much in the same way that, you know, we teach all of our students in the science of reading. So her, hers, one of her specialties is the science of reading. So we were going to be working with her on that. Today was sort of the kickoff. We had a large group that went to Goshen for a meeting with her and she's already been in the buildings, talking with teachers and administrators. And we're excited to be able to, to get going on that because we think that that will really, as you could see, our I read scores were, we've all been talking about that. Those are going up and I feel like this will just help that.
Dr. Deel.
I just wanted to give appreciation to the high school for your presentation. Thank you, guys, for your time. For those of us who live it, that's just a regular Monday, looking at things like that. But just knowing that it takes a lot of work behind the scenes and a lot of moving pieces in order to do that well. So also congratulations to Abby. She really is the best director of fun that we have, among other things. At the junior high, we are off to a good start with our literacy and math initiatives, which are our focus. We've collected our diagnostic data and word flight. We've collected diagnostic data within Alex and we are off and running with our plans. And so we were able to, two weeks ago, meet with Dr. Jenny French, who is our literacy consultant. And she will be back on Thursday and Friday, visiting the academy, the high school, and the junior high. And our junior high teachers are implementing her suggestions with fidelity. They're excited about it. And we're really ready to move on to that whole school movement, which will start on Friday with the junior high. They are also developing some PCC, so Preparing for College and Career Experiences with their large group Impact. They are also developing some PCC, so preparing for college and career experiences with their large group impact. So something that's different this year, the Junior High has impact every single day. But on Wednesdays, Matt and Lauren, among maybe some other people, are, are taking all of the students so that they can almost have like a whole assembly and get the same sort of information once a week. So they're gonna be doing some PCC experiences with that group. And they've also started scheduling parent-teacher conferences, so we're getting to that time. The academy, they're participating in Live United Day this Friday. And they're gonna be having about 75 students help build six more raised garden beds and filling them with soil. And their plan is that they're gonna be doing a fall garden that they can harvest with Felix's pantry so that they can offer fresh veggies to our students. And then for the career center, I will let Mr. Cuffey talk about that. I don't wanna steal his thunder. That's it.
Mr. Cuffey.
Kid's thunder.
Yeah, she, she mentioned it. I knew it was Cuffey. You're in that higher section now, so this is really kinda special.
First, LHS, congratulations. Great leadership going on there. They're kind of the end of the game where kids have been through five legislative changes and all this stuff's happened in their life. Now they, they have to do this and this and this now. And next thing you know, they're gonna be working and things, so. Congratulations on what you do. And as you know, you're only as good as the group over here that prepares them. So keep doing what you're doing. What Dr. Deal's referring to is we've been working for a long time to figure out this community rehab housing project. In my world, I've had this thought of how can we fix up some houses in the community that need, desperate need of fixing up? How can we give hands-on training to the career center? They used to build these beautiful new homes. That's kind of been off. But how can we get them engaged on fixing houses up and, and market the houses and things like that? So we have bought our first house. I say we, the city has bought their first house over on Stadium Drive. We have to logistically find a house by the career center they can get to and get back. Bought a house for $113,000. Working with Kai and Matt and Bob, we're thinking about $17,000 in rehab money, which the city's also gonna put up. So it'll be about $130,000 in this. Thoughts are, when it's completed, because of the free labor from the career center, that it'll sell from the 150 range. So the house will be fixed up. They're gonna get onsite training of fixing the house up. And the goal of this profit is to go back into scholarships at the career center. Grants, scholarships, potential internship funds for companies that want to hire some college students and actually pay them. I know there's probably some gymnastics around that of paying students, but we'll figure that out. So anyway, we bought our first house. This is gonna start. We're also gonna involve other pathways on the photography department, on how to take the beginning and after pictures, how to market the property. We're gonna video it. We're gonna have graphic design. We're gonna have all these things going on to promote the career center. And we're gonna have a lot of marketing signs going up out in front of the house. So it's the first one. The goal is to add two a year, pretty lofty goal, but we're getting there. So that's, that's the program in a nutshell.
Thank you. I don't think I have. We'll come back to you on this, Doc. All right. Moving on to public comments. This is your second opportunity.
Oh, crap. I was, I thought that was my report.
You get this all messed up.
You were the guest speaker in the curriculum.
The title of the mountain curriculum.
All right, so public comments. Anybody wants to make a second chance of this also, if you've got anything about the collective bargaining that you wanna talk about, you can also do so.
Great time.
We'll move on to that. Now it go to member comments. We'll leave you to the end, Tom Dunn, so you'll get warmed up. Mrs. Kerr.
I'd just like to say thank you to the high school. Great job. Very interesting presentation. I really enjoyed that. Thank you.
Mrs. Graff?
Same thing. Thank you very much. Loved the presentation. And Abby, you still back there? Congratulations.
Thanks, Mrs. Graff. See you at the course.
Mr. Hess?
Just need to know who's in charge of the temperature of this room. I am freezing.
You are retired now.
I guess I'm older too, so yeah, the blood doesn't circulate like it did one time. It's probably just as warm as it's ever been.
No, it's cold here. I'm never cold. It's freezing. It's chilly.
Great job, everybody. Thank you. Mr. Cuffey? You're all.
I'm good, Mike.
I really have nothing to add other than what everybody said, and so thanks, everyone, for coming. We'll see you next month. Now it's time for board.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
They don't have to come in two weeks.
So watch it on, will that be, will that be on streamed also, the next one in two weeks? Okay, all right.